The Manchester Essex Regional School District School Committee? All in favor? No, okay. That's okay. Six oh seven. All right, six oh seven. Okay, so public comment? Nobody. Student report. Do we have student on tape?
Are we getting a student?
Not a junior, but it's a question. We had talked about it in the question class and now we're thinking of student rep. So that's on me and I will take care of it. There was the updating you on the fact that it's a big sports week for us. We've got the boys' soccer went into the finals but lost on Saturday at St Mary's at Landon Park. fought a match with questionable record. Both girls' teams cleaned up, girls' field hockey, seven to nothing on Sunday afternoon. And girls' soccer, I'm sorry, girls' soccer seven to nothing. Girls' field hockey, four to nothing. So they're both advancing. And you'll see girls' soccer starting at 6:30 to advance to the...
Oh, someone just got a goal.
They started early?
Yes.
Yay!
Field hockey meets... Field hockey plays Gloucester tomorrow night at Reading and then if they are victorious, it's going to Water Tam. That's the game.
Goliath.
It's like...
Maybe when you speak to Tricia about a student, it should be a junior because one of the seniors are sort of...
Yeah. Yeah, not exactly perfect. Yep. We also had a lot of sorry seniors were doing their applications early because they were early on so that was a good reason. I think we had a conversation here and we just had a thought that all of them just have to call. I like that idea of ours. Chairman's report. I haven't much to say except today is the big night for our school vote. English for us already. It sounds like there is a huge turnout in both towns so thank you everyone for going to the polls for the school and for everything else. It's very important. Get out and vote. And I think that's it unless... What does he think? Consent agenda. Do I have a motion to... So... Any questions?
Yeah.
Javi, I wonder if you could just talk to us a little bit about transportation notes that you've given us about summarizing costs there?
Yes. You may recall that in last year's budget presentations, in addition to some of the more typical cost categories, which typically are like the big four are people, health insurance, facilities, added district tuitions, and then everything else, we started to talk about a fifth category, which is transportation, which you've been reading in the papers. You know, we've talked about it this week, there's been a lot of rising costs. And so it definitely hit us last year, both for the two, the two major categories are regular day transportation as well as transportation for special education related to added district placements. Those are the two major categories. Both have been rising significantly, both were a factor in the FY '18 budget and to be a factor in the current year budget and we expect them to be a factor again next year. We are part of, our services have been bid out for Salter so we are under contract for the next one more year minimum. We can extend for two more years with pricing that's already been set. So we will expect if they do increase our FY '20 budget to absorb the contract increase that we know already is coming. After that, the last two optional years are slightly lower. I suspect that's probably part of their strategy to ensure that we do take the options and going out to bid. And then, excuse me, on the student services side, one of the problems is you really can't lock in in advance so you're really at the width of the market. And so those costs have been rising as well. Big headlines we talked about are the impact of full employment in the economy and how that's driving of labor costs. Labor costs are the number one cost in transportation. We've also been hearing about a lot of school districts where that rising labor costs has been to driver shortages. We have been spared that thankfully. Salter's done a good job to manage that. But in a lot of other districts, drivers have been poached from district to district. Boston, Newt, and many other districts not having enough drivers to fulfill regular day education. So in that sense, things could be going a lot worse than they have been here. But again, on the student services side, here at the cost over the market, the costs are high. So we should expect that although our added district tuition costs are somewhat stable, we'll manage, that the transportation delay for those placements will be a much challenged in this year and in next year.
Can you tell us what you're hearing superintendent's like roundtable? Are these guys, are they talking about this? Because this is big. Well, I mean, I'm looking at the 42% up from five years ago. I mean, that's...
Are you looking at special education?
Both.
Special education transportation is a story as long as the history of schools.
Yeah.
And obviously places. So that's always a complaint and it's always a concern, but it's a mandate and it has to be done. So we just have to shift dollars to... There's no controlling because of the specialized needs.
Yeah.
So that one's kind of like an always and ongoing... I would say the past couple of years, general conversation around all of that is that I'm imagining the rise in cost of contract and service buses or people go and have a business with their own buses is presenting as an issue.
Yeah.
So asking if superintendents are advocating for funding changes?
Yeah, because Marissa Wall, whoever that person who runs that regional, they're saying that there's going to be a...
There are two things and we're a region, but we're a pretty small region.
Yeah.
So we play by different rules than straight municipalities. In a municipality, you only have to buss your elementary or grade six students and you can eliminate your busing and your total fee per service at the secondary level.
Yeah.
We can't. We're, as a region, we are beholden to provide by law transportation to all students outside the juvenile radius of schools. The conversation around regional transportation is that originally the unfulfilled promise was that an incentive for regionalizing schools was going to be a hundred percent reimbursement of transportation for that juvenile environment. That never has happened, but our reps in the past couple of years, mostly motivated by the Western Mass communities, have really started to advocate for that because it's a policy, it's an unbounded mandate. Regionals don't have an opportunity to be creative and if you're in a more, if your district covers more square miles than ours does, it's a real burden. Trenton, for example, has far more territory covered than its equipment costs.
Yeah.
Our costs are probably, I mean, we're smaller, we're producing first, which I think, we're taking the two towns together. So ours is more like municipality in terms of distance covered, but we play by the rules of regionalization. So I know our local rep team, Franti, Tar, inhale, have been very strong advocates and they were kind of spearheading getting the raise last year. I think we went from about a 50 to 60 plus to a 75 or 80 percent reinforcement.
Yeah.
So it's improving and I think the goal this year is to continue to work those relationships and get it to improve.
The other issue is our location to rapidly is sort of far from things. So for special ed transportation, it may be a longer ride for kids from Manchester and Essex than it is for a kid who lives in Weston or we have specialized type of transportation.
Yeah. I think our costs are managed when they're using local resources, but if we're placing in metro rest environment or even as far as an outstanding placement, that's where it starts to escalate.
Yeah.
And then the type of transportation.
Okay. I want more money.
There is some discussion about the Chapter 70 formula too, whether that can incorporate some of the special ed transportation costs, but there's always a way out there. So just in terms of your, things that sometimes school committee gets involved with, that conversation has come up somewhat, but as you know, the Chapter 70 formula changes are slow.
I'm tired of hearing that.
I know you are too. I mean, we've been here every year.
Well, I don't think they're slowing coming, but they're going to be slowing in the coming months. So they're on a multi-year, one-seventh per year change to the formula just slightly increased. But our enrollment, we've been held harmless because at the enrollment level we were at prior to them making changes to the formula. Because if they would start to redo enrollment for suburban areas, people would be losing Chapter 70 as they were increasing. And the other piece is that it's really looking to the biggest factor that was going to be the DAS communities. And they're not undoing the redistributive property of the formula. So if we're an 80/20 community already, it's going to be a negligible impact for us. And I think the conversation is make good on the funding formula, but do no harm. And don't do it in a manner that's going to take from other communities and there's some other things you should be asking for.
Can I ask a follow-up on that? Javi, I think I alluded to that in my email that I copied all of you guys on. There is no way to excuse the phrasing to play the market on this. I mean, we're locked in for another year. Then next year, obviously, we put it out to bid again, right?
We could.
Is there a wealth of bidders or are there only a few?
Great question. The state just happens to be looking into the issue of why statewide aid abnormally large, but that a really, really large number of districts are getting one bid contracts. So there's a problem there. It seems like there's some type of a pox rumor on this, really all the contractors who don't seem to bid on each other's, you know, territory or something like that. I don't know what it is. It's clearly if it was an agreement that was real, it would be legal and collusion. So I think the state's been looking into that, but at this point, there's no...
So they're saying there is no collusion?
Yeah.
Not in Russia at least. So do we kind of fall into that category where we've really only gotten...
We had one there for many years in the past. We had two and to be honest, we weren't terribly satisfied with the service from the other. So Salter's been a good provider, but there's no question we're not getting the benefits of a helping market.
But we're still saving money from our, doing it back in house.
Well, when we, yes, and I think there's also a whole host of managerial issues that come along with it. And what I've seen between custodial, food service, and transportation is that cost is an important factor, but managing is another factor because you need resources to manage those things effectively and expertise. So sometimes it's good to get the specialized managerial expertise and do what we do best, concentrate our money on the things we don't do well, which is, which you guys...
That made her.
Try it.
What is the out-of-state travel that we have in the consent agenda?
It's not ready.
Okay. There's just minutes.
I can't follow up on, did I follow up? I'm starting to lose track.
That's amazing.
We did at our, no, at our last meeting, we had looked at the out-of-state travel option for global studies. And after consultation with the attorney and further conversation with Tricia, we're going to seek another provider for the Houston trip. It was the Unitarian Church College, which looks like a great organization, but given some decisions we've made in the past around partnering with religious organizations, it seemed to be probably the district's most interested in the route. So they're on that and that will get represented to us.
Okay.
We do have a European trip coming up, but I needed a few more details before we go to the rest.
Do you want me to answer those questions?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind.
Not at all. So bridge, 174,000 total project costs for the footbridge remediation engineering and design services. Insurance company asked us to finish paying, of course, admitting the full claim, which we'll now do. The question was how much should we expect to get back from insurance? The answer is this is what we have an attorney for. My initial guess is that they will try to lower off the ball significantly. It could be somewhere in $30,000 to $50,000, which would leave us significantly exposed to about six figures. So, but I think we have a very good case to make and so we will pursue this vigorously.
Witness.
That's right. We have a witness and so I think the question is, you know, how, it's too early to say, but you know, at some point, you might need to spend a little money to make that.
And the legal fees.
Huh?
And the legal fees.
Correct. I think that would be money well spent. So that's a good question that you asked about that. Turf fields, $500,000 estimated cost is a very rough number, but those are some of the figures I hear out there. Could be more, could be a little less.
Is that initial install or...
To replace.
Just for a replace. Yeah, we won't have to redo all the underwork. This field costs over a million bucks because there's a ton of drainage and all that stuff. We just need to put a new carpet down and kind of smooth things out and maybe do a small amount of underwork. But the bottom line is that we have been using our facility rental program as a reserve fund to put aside money and we have approximately $160,000 in that fund, which is the hard work of maybe seminary years and rental fees. So we make a little bit each year and it's just, we just do not touch it. And so that's socked away. That can help us get, you know, third of the way there. We do have other reserve funds. We might pay for a portion of it out of the annual budget. Maybe we do some short-term financing. And then for the other field, I think we, you know, we'll obviously have a conversation with County Manchester about that because it's a shared resource for the least degree. And so there's some shared expense.
How much life do we have to lose to fields, do you think?
I think the, sorry, the Brook Street field is older and it really is a couple of years at best. This one, I would say two, three years past that.
You don't have a financial obligation to Brook Street, do you?
Tricia, it's part of the leased property as part of the rental agreement with shared costs based on usage.
Similar to the bridge.
Yeah, so well, different than the bridge only in that if we have 50/50 usage of the turf field, then we have 50/50 expenditure obligation.
People are very passionate about fields. I think we can do some fundraising about that too.
We talked about the corporate sponsorship kind of thing. Nothing will be done to that until the school's built. Yeah. So one quick follow-up on the fields, I think we talked about this briefly, is there a way we can get signage on those fields saying, beat it after dark, get out of here after dark, you can't be on this field?
I felt we had signs like that that were up there already, but maybe not.
Okay. I haven't looked. I'm...
By the way, the girl through the...
And then the only other question is, I think there was one about custodial.
That's expensive.
So what I, my information I provided was not terribly clear. The advanced maintenance solution budget spent will go up $4,000 per month.
Okay.
So that's $48,000 annually versus a salary that we would have spent $52,000. So that's the 4,000, so there's two different 4,000. We're going to save 4,000 there, but we're also going to save significantly on benefits and that's where, I think I said, the total savings per year when you look at health insurance. And I think it was closer to $25,000, I think the bulk of the number. So significant savings to that process and it happens to be getting great service because the person who's there is knowing our building and I just read on the lady at the principal saying how happy she was with the person who scored here. $30,000 per year.
The elevator fines.
Elevator fines.
Oh, yeah. Why are you on the hook for...
So the truth is that we did have a not-so-great contractor and they were summarily fired as a result of that. However, we did have some obligation of our own on the managerial side, which was subsequently corrected as well. And so I think the bottom line is there's only, we could not get something in or anything that would clearly say that EAB had to pick up, the elevator company had to pick up. But since we've switched providers, we haven't had any issues. And it's been already five, six years. It's really a long, long ass thing and clients were appealed way down. We did a lot of work on the appeal process to bring it down to a small number.
It sounded like it wasn't just us.
It was churches and it was like ridiculous. I went to these appeal things and you see a lot of mom, pa, nonprofits there who are also getting hit by the same change in the law. They basically changed the law that said for every day that you don't get your certificate, you pay per day. And within, by August 15th, you could have accrued, you know, a minimum amount of fines. And so that change caught a lot of people by surprise before, right?
Sounds like a racket. All right, I think we're good on that. Have we been on the discussion part of it?
Yeah.
Do we have a vote?
Not yet. And I just wanted to clarify that also includes transfer, number one budget transfer, that small little item. Any questions otherwise that we can, in the consent agenda? We could just maybe note that in the, in the place, or something.
How much was the budget transfer?
It was two transfers for $2,800-ish.
Obviously, Andre's was like $2,800-ish.
For $2,800. Here, guys, exact numbers.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Those close? Abstentions? Any questions here? Thank you. Subcommittee reports. Caroline and Annie.
So just to begin, but I just want to say thank you so much to the whole communities. The parents really set it up and helped to...
Community members.
Community members, yes. You're right, thank you. So a lot of people done a lot of work in the past for two days.
And I've been approached many times over the last, like, I think we can have just saying, you know, congratulations to you guys. You guys have done a lot of hard work, very supportive. So that was nice to hear people stop and tell me that, but I'm not kind of like doing this on the back end. So thank you, guys.
Thank you for the boost for today. And that is a real show of support out there. It's not very pleasant. So thank you.
Told him the cake out of the rain.
Probably just worth noting that we do have a couple of meetings lined up tomorrow, Fridays or whatever the outcome is tonight, just to make sure we are prepped and ready for the next steps.
Right, so we have a meeting tomorrow morning in Essex, should this not pass? And then we get one in Manchester as well?
Yeah, Friday morning, budget collaboration session, just to look at, again, if there needs to be a Plan B, what we're hoping for, planning for Plan A, which is what are the next steps in financing and getting, which company answers about being on space.
All right, finance committee.
We have a collaborative meeting on Friday.
We do. 8:15, right? 8:15 on Friday.
8:15.
That's it for us. Policy committee, Ken and Richard.
We're working on, our next meeting is set for next week, or before, we look at four different policies, public comment, transportation, field trip, and student travel regulations. As a public comment policy, what we have in there is basically the auto language that asked, as you suggested, so. And it, I was going to say, we'll have something to share, I think we were talking about hanging all that, but it basically states how public comments meets guidelines for our leadership speaker. There are actually two separate policies. One is in general, interaction, school committee with the public, the other is specifically about people in public. So, transportation policy. Javi and Pam, we've had a discussion, there are some suggestions around how to tighten some of that up in there because it's clear there are portions of the transportation policy where we have to satisfy statutory minimums. There are areas where we will, and trying to keep it essentially as sort of policy, but not very restrictive down there. In terms of field trip policy and student travel regulations, Pam and the several members of administrative staff were kind enough to spend about a quarter of an hour going through and discussing the kind of overnight slash, the overnight long trips that go on at the different levels, from narrow business to Washington DC high school level. And there was a lot of learning, a lot of discussions around how things have changed over time. A particular immediate concern or needing to be addressed is we want to make sure that we are up with or ahead of addressing, you know, ensuring that we're providing a safe environment for LGBTQ students. Also touch someone, potentially staff, but just to make sure that we are inclusive on that. So that will probably be the first thing that comes with it. What we also looked at was kind of seeing how the two communities came out with building the school. It's been close to 20 years now that we've been a collective district. The area where there were a number of improvements we thought could be made is already narrow business, or those, but so in the future, we'll have some more, looking for feedback, some ideas on how do we take what is really good and potentially that experience of bringing both schools in the district together, the project adventure, how do we take that experience in other ways we can improve on it?
Not today.
So that's sort of what...
So you have kids, Chris?
Yes. I think bigger in November or December.
Negotiations.
We had a productive meeting. We're starting to discuss some interesting options for, you know, looking at big, hot funds to, you know, for salaries and how to make it all work to make everyone happy and make the best for district taxpayers. We were supposed to meet again tomorrow and that has to be postponed. There was a small working group that night yesterday living on...
Working on healthcare.
Second. Healthcare has done a ton of work for home state healthcare.
Yeah.
That's great. Thank you. That subgroup has been meeting off, that's the majority of our big, our meeting last time was about healthcare issues and we're pretty close.
Awesome.
We started in on state, I'm sorry. It was really just discussing how, what's the problem we're trying to solve. It is that we're working all of the segments, targeted issues, so we're starting to narrow down work. That, that one is one that can kind of spin out pretty quickly and I think we've got to narrow it down for a little bit.
And the spirit is still positive energy from the teachers and, you know, we're all very cooperative.
Yes. Definitely.
So the frustration is the same all the way around, which is we have limited resources and much to work. So it's not always representative of what we want to do, but in fact, we have to...
It's understood by all.
I think so.
Yeah. Great, thank you, everyone. Pam, some other things to report, please.
Just some positive things. I already did kind of the athletics roundup. Want to give a shout out to the football team too. They haven't had a huge winning season, but they get the grit and perseverance award because they've been playing with about 21 kids total, but they're never all ready to go at the same time. But they won two, two big games and they're going to be able to play on Thanksgiving against our rivals Georgetown. So I just think it's a really good example of school friendship and teamwork because they're out there working hard every day during the pouring rain this afternoon and they've managed to make quite a bit out of the season that's been touched by them. So there's a plan in place to have all of the numbers secured by end of June so we know for certain whether we'll be able to run a program next year. We have a responsibility to the broader league. I mean, they were great partners in this as well because we worked hard not to cancel games because, you know, it has an impact on the group's seasons. So I think Tricia's laid out a game plan to do early enrollment with a deposit, I believe she mentioned, in details will be forthcoming, just to make sure we have a clearer picture of that coming up next year.
We've decided that athletic task force, that's a question.
So please jump in if you have the talent.
And she wants to have a sort of future of the program task force just for football with all of the interested parties, constituents. You know, those were some of the ideas she mentioned, doing a early enrollment with a deposit. One of the ideas that came up was to just have a freshman team next year if there's a big cohort or freshmen, just have a, sorry, just have a JV team next year and build up to having a varsity program again. So a bunch of ideas are floating around.
That's great. I think the lesson learned is let's get ahead of it.
Yeah, my thought on that is the early enrollment with a deposit, as long as we're out really ahead of that, so nobody says, oh, I had no idea and my son wants to play. I feel like we've got to be, or the parties involved have to be all over that really early.
Yeah, guys.
Exact numbers.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Um, subcommittee reports. Caroline and Annie.
So just to begin, but I just want to say, thank you so much to the whole communities. The parents really set it up and helped.
Community members.
Community members, yes. You're right, thank you. So a lot of people done a lot of work in the past for two days.
Yeah. And I've been approached many times over the last like, I think we can have just saying, you know, congratulations to you guys, you guys have done a lot of hard work. Very supportive. So that was nice to hear from people stopping telling that, but not kind of like doing this on the back end. So, so thank you guys.
Thank you for being here today. And this real show of support out there, not very pleasant. So thank you.
Told me the cake out of the rain.
Probably just worth noting that we do have a couple of meetings lined up tomorrow, Fridays, or whatever the outcome is tonight, just getting sure we are covering the relevant steps.
Right, so we have a meeting tomorrow morning in Essex, should this not pass? And then we get one in Manchester as well.
Yeah, Friday morning, budget collaboration session, just to look at, again, if there needs to be a Plan B, what we're hoping for, planning for Plan A, which is what are the next steps in financing and getting, which company answers about planning on space.
You know what I'm saying? All right, um, finance committee.
We have a collaborative meeting Friday.
We do. Eight fifteen, right? Eight fifteen on Friday.
Eight fifteen.
Um, that's it for us. Policy committee, Ken and Richard.
We're working on our next meeting is set for next week, or before, we looked at before the policies, public comment, transportation, field trip, and student travel regulations. In terms of public comment policy, what we have in there is basically the auto language that asked, yes, he suggested, so. And it, I was gonna say, well, I have something to share, I mean, we were talking about hanging all that, but it basically states how public comments meets guidelines for how we should speak. There are actually two separate policies, one is in general on interaction, school committee with the public, the other is specifically about people in plan that are common. So, transportation policy, Abby and Pam, we've had a discussion, there are some suggestions around how to tighten some of that up in there, because it's clear there are portions of the transportation policy where we have to satisfy statutory and regulatory minimums. There are areas where we will, and trying to keep it essentially as sort of policy, but not very restrictive. In terms of field trip policy, student travel regulations, Pam and the several members of administrative staff were kind enough to spend that part of an hour going through and discussing the kind of overnight slash, the overnight long trips that go on at different levels, from Maryland to Washington DC high school level. And there was a lot of learning, a lot of discussions around how things have changed over time. A particular immediate concern or needing to be addressed is, we want to make sure that we are up with or ahead of addressing, you know, ensuring that we're providing a safe environment for LGBTQ students. Also touch someone, potentially staff, but just to make sure that we are inclusive on that. So that will probably be the first thing that comes with it. What we also looked at was kind of seeing how the two communities came out with building the school, has been close to twenty years now, we've been a collective district. The area where there were a number of improvements we thought could be made is already our Maryland District, are those, so in the future, we'll have some more, looking for feedback, some ideas on how do we take what is really good and potentially that experience of bringing both schools and the district together, the project adventure, how do we take that experience in other ways we can improve on it?
Not doing.
Yeah, definitely. So, that's sort of what.
So, who cares?
Yes. I think bigger in November or December.
Um, negotiations.
Um, we had a productive meeting, we're starting to discuss some interesting options for, you know, looking at big, hot funds to, you know, for salaries and how to make it all work to make everyone happy and make the best for district and taxpayers. We were supposed to meet again tomorrow and that has to be postponed. There was a small working group that night yesterday, living on.
Working on healthcare.
Second. Healthcare has done a ton of work for home state with healthcare.
That's great, thank you.
That subject has been meeting off, that subject has been meeting off on, that was the majority of our big, our little meeting last time was about healthcare issues and we're pretty close.
That's awesome.
We started in on Saturday, because it was really just discussing how, what's the problem we're trying to solve, is that we're working all of the segments, targeted issues, so we're starting to narrow down work. That one is one that can kind of spin out pretty quickly, and I think we've got to narrow it down.
And the spirit is still positive energy from the teachers and, you know, for all their competitiveness.
Yes.
Definitely.
So the frustration is the same all the way around, which is we have limited resources and much to work, so it's not always representative of what we want to do, but in fact, we have to.
It's understood by all.
I think so.
Yeah.
Um, great, thank you. Uh, Pam?
Yep.
Some other questions?
Just some po- some positive things, I already did kind of the athletics roundup. Want to give a shout out to the football team too, they haven't had a huge winning season, but they get the grit and perseverance award because they've been playing with about twenty-one kids total, but they're never all ready to go at the same time. But they won two, two big games and they're gonna be able to play on Thanksgiving against our rivals Georgetown. So I just think it's a really good example of school friendship and teamwork because they're out there working hard every day, they're in the pouring rain this afternoon, and they've managed to make quite a bit out of the season, that's been much better than that. So there's a plan in place to have all of the numbers secured by end of June, so we know for certain whether we'll be able to run a program next year. We have a responsibility to the broader league. I mean, they were great partners in this as well, because we work hard not to cancel games, you know, but it hasn't impacted on the group of seasons. So I think Trish has laid out a game plan to do early, early enrollment with a deposit, I believe she mentioned, in details will be forthcoming, just to make sure we have a clearer picture of that coming up next year.
We're supposed to have an athletic task force, that's a question.
So please jump in if you have that talent.
And she wants to have a sort of future of the program task force, just for football with all of the, um, interested parties, constituents. You know, those were some of the ideas she mentioned, doing a early enrollment with a deposit. Um, one of the ideas that came up was to just have a freshman team next year, if there's a big cohort or freshmen, just have a, sorry, just have a JV team next year and build up to having a varsity program again. Um, so a bunch of ideas are floating around.
That's great.
Yeah.
I think the lesson learned is let's get ahead of it.
Yeah, my, my thought on that is the early enrollment with a deposit, as long as we're out really ahead of that, so nobody says, oh, I had no idea and my son wants to play. I feel like we've got to be, or the parties involved have to be all over that really early.
Well, and you have, if there's just a JV team, you have to make arrangements for the juniors and seniors to play for some kind of consortium come along, yeah, that's the work.
So if that's the play, I think also, as we're rolling out budget, we'll be getting, she'll be solidifying the game plan for the reorganization of admin, which hopefully will help to contribute resources and structure around all of these things that were getting in mind for the task force and in other places. I did, I'll give another shout out, because there can't be enough, I have my list, was community support, the building project, it's really just been amazing, especially from, like, into town meeting, there was a lot for us to do, to be prepared and ready to answer questions for this one, for those of us with control issues. I feel like letting someone else take the wheel, but it's just been incredibly impressive and heartwarming, how much support is out there for the schools and how much people are willing to do, including standing in the rain on a horrible day to try and get the kids to a better place. So that's, that's been really awesome. With all the time not prepping for something, building project, or just waiting, I have been able to spend more time just kind of in the buildings and seeing what the kids are up to. Magic Stars was this week, Play Build, that was just another great example of all of the things that we're doing as well and opportunities we're providing to the kids. And I know we spend a lot of time identifying the areas we want to get better, but there were a lot of kids with a lot of self-confidence, who were willing to get up and put it out there and just pursue what interests them.
And a lot of young ones with a lot of stage presence. Wow.
Yep, there was a little guy who did, a little girl who did Born This Way, I just thought that was, wow, that was an amazing performance. So, so through all the ages, there's the parent support there, people out on a Sunday to support the kids, which ultimately supports the schools, that was just a really, just enjoyable to kind of sit back and watch everybody have a good time. Ruler, you can jump in on this one, that seems to be kind of full throttle. I know Trish did a big workshop today with her staff, and she was texting me that she thought it would really look, still looking forward to details tomorrow. But what we've been out doing, we did some ELA walks and just pop-ins to the schools, you can see the charters and the mood meters, and the adults are mood metering each other and using it as point of explanation. So it is taking hold, is part of our language and common language for how we express ourselves. So it's just been really exciting and fun to kind of sit back and focus in on the good stuff that's happening and just really see some of the positives. So that's, that's what I've got, good stuff, our kids are doing a great job, our teachers are doing a great job, we're making progress.
And I think we have to also give a big shout out, sorry, we have to give a big shout out to Smallville too. So thank you for all the supporting, and I think this night was just, they did an amazing job. I'm always, not impressed, but blown away by the kids who get up and, I could never do that, I could never get up. Your daughter included. I could never do that, and so I just think it's incredible. And, and the fact that every year they get a huge full docket of kids, so there's no shortage of talent, is there?
Great.
Yeah, so, so thank you, Smallville. You want new business? Okay. Julie, you're up.
And we're gonna try to be disciplined and, like, run and then ask all of our questions afterwards.
Okay. Well, I tried to organize it very similarly to last year's presentation, so we would be able to anticipate, you know, what was coming. So this year, looking at data, we've been looking at it a lot of different ways, and I can show it to you at the end, but what I've been trying to do is kind of paint a whole picture. And that's kind of the way that we've been looking at things this year, is, you know, how do you represent things visually in a way that people can understand it and kind of take some, some understanding away from that. It is hard to look at in terms of like the way that it's presented to us, in terms of the spreadsheets and number crunching you have to do and things like that. So I've been trying to pull some different ways, so you could look at it differently and use some of the reporting mechanisms that, that we're offered when we, when we take a look at it across the board. So just to get a whole range of this AP scoring together, really gives you a sense of how many kids take our AP exams or are taking our AP coursework, I should say, at the high school. In total, we have had quite a few students, and I always get a sense of how many kids are taking which specific exam. So we had a huge turnout in psychology this year, which generally tends to be a pretty[857.62][858.52]intense course, but also one that our students really do really enjoy. But we have a range also with kids taking studio art, English language composition, or literature composition, we have kids taking government, we have calc AB, computer science, statistics, and as you're kind of flowing through there, you'll see that our students are doing really well across all of these different content areas. So when you're taking a look at this particular graph, you want to look from left to right, so the five is the, is the highest of all the scores that you can get if you were to take an AP exam. And then the three plus category, if you go from mid to left, that's generally where we tend to see our students falling in terms of the coursework that, on average, they're able to take and pass well within this filter with the AP exam possible. So there's a lot of writing involved in that, and you'll see writing is a real strength of the high school across a lot of the different assessments that are taken. But when you think about kids taking assessments later on in life, it's a general writing exam in one way or the other. So we do really focus heavily on that at the high school, and I feel like our students do very well.
So if I add across that bottom line, it's like giving the whole number of students that are falling behind.
Yes.
So we have two pages of this.
There's two pages, so they may have printed back to back, so I could go a little bit deeper into the method. But typically, this is, this is a really good turnout in terms of AP exam, AP coursework, and, and scoring as well, so I'm really happy about that.
I think Trish would want me or us to say that they don't limit, like, we don't have three, four, that's it. To get into the AP, we don't limit kids taking their AP. So they've been able to continue with some pretty strong scores while opening up options for students to try things. So some schools will have strict entrance rules, which will, can artificially drive up your, not artificial, you can have strict entrance rules to ensure an outcome. And I think we've taken the position that if a kid wants to try it and has a relatively good record for their success, that they can get the opportunity.
And are there any, in any of those classes that they're too large? I mean, is there a benefit to doing the other way?
I mean, in terms of how many sections you need to offer.
How many kids are in, yeah.
She hasn't raised that as an issue.
I haven't seen that as an issue here, I've seen it other high schools, absolutely, where you'd have seventy-five kids trying to get into like an English language and comp course online. So it depends on how you teach your child with that capacity or the training to teach AP. And, and I do think that they do a great job here of trying to determine what courses you'll be taking the year prior to registration. So it seems to flow really well. I have not heard of any, any particular problem in terms of taking passes.
It's good for something, it's a good thing for Trish to revisit, because I can recall we had several conversations years past about creating a class minimum limit, because we were off, we were allowing APs to run with three or four kids at a time, and that was a resource, it was the sufficiency of resources. But I haven't heard her come back and say she is overloaded in any one course, and that's a possibility, but it's something that.
And what do you do when you see?
We're just supposed to. Sorry that I started it.
Write them down.
All right.
All right. Sorry.
So we're happy with that, I can show you some of your trend work, that's done on the, on the AP exam, and you may not be able to see it from your seat, so hopefully you can see it in your own PowerPoint, the trend data. And we generally tend to stay in high E's, I would say, for our twelve percentage of kids that are scoring on three or above. And I think that's, that's great work, that's just good work all around. And you can see that in the graph on the left, you can see them across the board there, you get a good sense of that. And that's, that's not easy too. So I feel like in that regard, we've been able to stay pretty consistent with our score as well, that's great.
And that's showing us we're consistently outperforming state and international.
Yes.
That is wonderful.
Absolutely. Which is great, I mean, it's truly remarkable, I think, when you put all this data together to really look at it. So for APs, we go to SATs, and so our SAT scores, this is another range that we do particularly well on, on our SAT scoring. And basically what I wanted to show you was a number of different things on this particular range. One was the total score overall differential, how kids are breaking down in, or how the breakdown happens, I should say, in the score points or the cut points. So we tend to have a pretty decent showing, I would say, within our fourteen, our eleven ninety to fourteen hundred bank, and I would say if you wanted to equate that almost to the three plus category on the AP exams, you could certainly do that. Our kids generally range within the eleven hundred and above scores, and I'm really happy with that. What that says to me is our kids are doing a lot of evidence-based writing across their curriculum and across their baccalaureate work, because of that and the breakdown of the cross test scores. They're also doing some pretty significant computation in math, which is great. And so I feel like when you put those two things together in an SAT exam, you get a really good sense of, of how these students are doing on a well-rounded scale. Because if I, what I'm trying to think about is how to equate this for people, and I think about the MCAS exam, how they're looking at, at scoring now holistically in a way that incorporates the ELA and ACT. And so as you're trying to look at that over time, you really get a sense of how well our students do when they start to hit the SAT scores. And that's a good, I think a good indicator of a K to twelve way of looking at the work that's been done in classes. So I'm really happy with our SAT scores, and I feel like our teachers are too, and Trish is, and feeling like if anything, what they're doing now to help students with the SAT scores is allowing them to retake the exam and then super score it, so taking the best of whatever exam it is that they happen to take. So if they take an SAT out of the gate, many of you know this year at high schools, they do well in math on the first test, and they do well, second time they take it in ELA or the, you know, the writing component or reading component, so they're able to super score those and send those scores off to colleges, and that's, that's a great thing, so it's not a one and done situation.
Julie, did you have a clarification question? Was it more like a discussion question?
So overall, I'm feeling like when I look at this data, I really get a sense that our kids can knock it out of the park in high school, as we're expecting them to do, and they're growing and learning as they're moving up through the elementary and middle, and then when they hit high school, it's like they hit their stride, which seems pretty normal if you have kids. You know, you kind of get that sense overall when you look at them, K to twelve, and all the different things that happen in their school life over time, that makes a lot of sense, that's the goal, to get them to this place at what they're at in their first school. Does everyone have any questions? I know that we're not just, yeah, no questions at this moment.
It's really long.
It is hard. I'm gonna jump into MCAS, because I feel like that's where the most changes happen, quite frankly. We have a new, the new assessment that started last year and was our baseline, but now we are dealing in this whole next generation world, which is a new assessment based on the new standards that were put out in 2017. And so this particular assessment, I feel like this is kind of the groundwork for some of the SAT and AP work that's done right now. And that's, I guess, the, the whole goal of it really, is so that our students are able to perform at a high level by the time they reach the tests that are going to colleges, whether it's an AP exam or SATs or AP exam. And so that's where the college and career readiness comes from, when they talk about that in the whole framework world. So the Next Generation MCAS collects performance on all the accountability indicators, so when I, when I was talking to principals about this the other day, I, I need to think of it in this kind of like left brain, right brain way. So the MCAS and accountability work together, so I'm gonna talk about the MCAS, but just know that this is all the foundational stuff for accountability. Okay, so accountability changed as well, because the state likes to change everything at once, not just one little thing. So we have ELA and math changes, we have MCAS and accountability changes, and all kinds of things under the hood here. So when I talk about MCAS.
If I've got it right, they changed what they're testing the kids on.
Yes.
How they're testing it, how they're reporting the tests, and how the whole thing goes into a score for the district or the school.
That's correct. Every single possible potential change is here. So that's what this list is generally saying here. They've updated the twenty-year-old assessment, they are focusing on critical thinking, application knowledge, making connections between reading and writing, which is all good stuff. And then they're giving, their field, their goal here is to show that by the time our students are finishing up with the MCAS, they're ready for the SAT and APs. They've kind of done that level of work that allows them to, to fare well. And I, I can see that in the scores at the high school, absolutely, that is a real phenomenon. They've changed the uniform as well, so they changed the, the design of the test, our students used to read and write, now they're reading and writing, but also reporting it out on a computer, which we were really worried about, I'll be honest with you. Transitioning a third grade over from taking an assessment that's a handwritten essay and asking them to type it is really a big request. So that was our kind of worry, how it's going to work as well. We didn't really notice a drop in the writing scores, which is amazing. However, I will say, the level of write, I printed out all of the kids' essays to give to the print spaces, they could look at the writing, and the different minutes, and it's been, it's been called for now, within writing. And I printed out the elementary, you know, the packet was like this, I printed out, the upper elementary was a little bigger, I printed out the middle school, it was like literally five hundred pieces of paper. So you can definitely, you could get a sense at the printer, how much more our students are writing and how much more they're able to do at paper over.
It's pretty.
That's right, you can blame the paper on me.
It's a real big challenge.
And so I do feel like I was happy with that, at the same time, I'm really interested to see how the growth happens over time around writing, because I do, I do have some questions on that, but we'll see how that goes down the road. Eventually, all of our students will be taking an exam on the computer, and not here at the high school. So next year, our high school kids will be, believe it or not, I can predict it will be the opposite, but no, our high schoolers will go onto the computer next year and join the rest of our AP contingency. So with that said, for those of you that remember the old MCAS, our students scored an advanced proficient mutual criminal warning when they would get the scores. Now they're being reported as exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, and not meeting expectations. So that's the transition language. And then the score points went from the two hundred scale to a five hundred scale. Right, so let's likely like that. It's a different kind of thing, however, for those of you that are interested in standards-based report cards, student-based reporting, the language on the right that we're using on a next generation in the MCAS aligns with standards-based reporting, because if you read the descriptors, it talks about how a student will perform at this particular level, and then it requires to grade level expectations. So it's really bringing it down to a grade level proficiency, as opposed to knocking out of the park on an exam that could have a range of proficiency. So it's really kind of honed, those standards have honed down and, and really been aligned by particular grade levels. So grade three, you're supposed to be able to do X, Y, Z, and then you're assessed on that material. So it's a little different now.
I also see that it's a student, you know, parent guardian is a part of this.
Correct.
Which was not.
Never, yes, it was not, never stated, it was expected but not stated, so we have, so it's a core team, we're working on this together, home and in school. Any other questions on this? That's really just the change I wanted you to really be aware of, the language and the numbers and how that transitioned. And then for those of you that got a report, one of your children who may have gotten a report from their school, and I'm sure they did now, the, the results are presented in this way, so that it shows you the range from left to right of those scaled cut scores, and where your child falls, the score, the language, and the explanation. And I like the way that they've done that, because it's much more visual, and I feel like it makes more sense to people. And at the bottom, you can always see on your own individual reports at home, the question numbers, and then how your child answered that to those questions, so that information's also still there, which is great. So one of the things that people may be finding is that, you know, before, and if you have kids in different schools or at different grade levels, you'll have this question, why did my child score proficient on the old MCAS, but now they're in partially meeting expectations? And so the language here from the Department of Ed pretty much says, it's really the new standards, basically. It's, it's the grade level expectation that, that your child is working in, that has been. It's the grade level expectation that your child is working in that has been raised. So it is a higher expectation at every grade level for every content area, really, quite frankly. So it's the shift into a more challenging grade. And so sometimes when that happens, here you may be caught in between both worlds and it takes some time to level that out. But as I can see from the SATs and AP scores, that really does happen. It's just a progress over time. So when we look at the, the state did a number of webinars. I think Kim and I sat through, three at least. Ree and I was present for two in real life. And so they talk a lot about these baselines and the changes between grade three and A and the change between 2017 and 2018 and the cuts scores and how all that works. And so this is just a representation of basically the statewide results for grades three through eight in ELA and then how the students score across the state. So that was that state data. And then here's how they scored across the state at math, at each particular grade level combined. So this is helpful, but not the most helpful information. What they use it for is to kind of run trend data, figure out across the state, do we notice any particular deficiencies or major strengths or areas that we feel like we need to address within the exam itself? So you do a lot of internal assessing for this as well. And then sometimes you'll see at the grade 10 level, especially in the ELA, I'm sorry, especially in the science, they're still taking the old MCAS exam because they haven't transitioned into the new one. They only did that with ELA and math. So you may have a child who took a fifth grade exam last year or an eighth grade exam and got the new results in ELA and math and old results in science because the science is still being reported out in advanced proficient. I know, it's like massive transition for people sometimes with the way that the state's done that. But they just didn't transition everyone at the same time. That's really funny. So if you're reading the report and you're confused, don't be, don't take it personally. It's not just you. The state's been reporting out this data in a lot of different ways. So it's, I think next year we'll all agree that's a sigh of relief when it's all in the same format. And we don't have to keep going back and forth, trying to go from old scale to this new scale. You're not alone. So our Essex Elementary School data, we can start with that, just at the MCAS level. What I tried to do in this is just represent where our students scored in grades three and four on the new exam. And what we're finding at Essex is that 70% of our kids in grades three scored in the top two quartiles, which is great. And we were very happy with that and exceeding expectations and meeting expectations rates. And then in math, they've scored at 66 percentile. And that's all with new exams, all online, major massive transitions for them. And so I'm feeling like because it's a baseline score for them, they really came into this pretty strong, honestly. Grade three generally tends to be scores that are the lowest of them all because it's the first time our kids have ever taken a massive exam like this. So it's an entry level thing, if you will. In grade four, 85% of our students in ELA and 80% of our students in math were reported at exceeding or meeting expectations, which is great. So you can see that kind of upward trend. And that's where they start to count after grade three and into grade four, the student percentile data and things like that.
I want to spend some time on this one.
Yes. This one or?
I want to look at the Essex Elementary data because when I got the report that you sent us, this one?
That's the accountability data, yeah. That's what I'm saying. So that, that's why I was saying, I want you to think of this in two buckets. So all of this is the MCAS data, which is combined and sorted and built in just reporting on ELA and math and science. And then within accountability, which is the report that you got in the mail from Kim, in the accountability, that's everything combined across the grade levels in the school, in the new accountability system, which is not this.
I'm sorry that I'm stupid.
No, you're not. You're not at all.
The accountability is the report cut from the school or the district. And these test scores are one percentage component of it. So she's going to show you what the other pieces of the report card are, they're giving you your final grade.
How is all of that information and the stuff you sent us earlier, how is all that informed? How do they get all of that data on how the kids are performing in all of those subjects?
Hang on, we'll get there.
Okay, I'll show you. So this is all, all like you're in an English class, okay? You take the class, you take this exam at the end of the year. This is how you do in this year on that test. And then they report it out in a graph.
So this is the way it always has been?
Always.
So this accountability is the new base?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just...
Yep, yep. So this is every third grade child who took the ELA exam, reported out in this graph.
MCAS, yeah.
Yep, right here. Yep. Every child that took the math exam combined, reported out in this graph.
So when I look at the math scores for the state?
Yes.
It looks like that the kid, there are quite a few kids not meeting expectations.
Correct. Which are you looking at, just like?
I'm looking at grade three and four math. And I'm just seeing that the state level of not meeting expectations is significant.
Right. So what, I know, the numbers are so small. Yeah. So that's what we're trying to figure out. At each particular grade level?
Yeah.
Where are our students faring? And what needs to be done for radiation? In terms of where are they at the grade level of expectations? So we have everyday math, we've had that for a long time. They've had five different iterations of it. They've aligned it to the standards. So now it's really us looking at the math, but also the program and trying to figure out probably sync all our data together with the grade level expectations.
And you know, we're holding questions to the end of the exam. Both elementary schools are going to tell me that they're came from math specialties for years and that. And it shows here.
Well, the standards have also been raised.
And it's quite...
For the blue. So the expectation is more now than it probably was.
The same as the blue in English.
Yeah.
But I also... Can we go through because the whole accountability is based only half of all and another half on a sub? We really need to get them to where they need to go. Because we could draw that conclusion, but we can also say 80% of our kids are what they need to be.
Yes.
And if we just acknowledge that it's a new baseline and that we've already upped the standards, we are actually even decent starting point?
Yeah.
So keep going. I think it'll come together when you pull them into all of the different buckets of accountability. So some of the things we've been talking about, just as a quick aside, achievement is only of the total number of students in a class is only one small component of the overall.
I'm trying to look at that.
So we'll have the big reveal, how you get this.
I'm waiting for this. Let's keep marching forward.
All right. So I would say the same is inherent in the score as in grade three at Memorial. It's an entry level exam, so it's really just going to be baseline for the student's trajectory over time. On grade four, our math scores are different in the sense of our, we have a higher proficiency in exceeding expectations in Memorial and in math. So, and they're both using the same program. So it's really going to be looking at, I think, construction because how we're looking at that, how we're doing that.
I think that...
I know, it's hard. All right, it's hard. But it's definitely something we are talking about. Essex grade five is similar in that sense. You can see it more here, but you can see the bottom of, the bottom of this grid actually shows you the old school science scores in terms of CPI. But you'll see, the CPI is for science, the old, you know, it's too different color. So the new exam deals with the top two buckets and the old exam was on the bottom.
Yes.
Particular grade. So our students in grade five at Essex, if I can show you. 72% of our students were in meeting or exceeding expectations, 66% in math. We also, I wanted to take a look at science really quickly. We have 67% of our students in advanced proficiency in grade five. So this is the first science exam they'd ever really taken at the state level. They wait until the kids are at the fifth grade level before they do the science exam. So that's just the grade data right there, but it's four years worth of learning. So Memorial, we are looking at 85% ELA meeting and exceeding expectations and 76% meeting and exceeding expectations in math and 77% advanced proficiency in science. And middle school's grade six data, we have 77% in meeting expectations and exceeding expectations in ELA, 70, I'm sorry, what was that? 77% and 64% in math, so we're looking at that obviously as well. And grade seven, and I would have to say this is where our biggest focus area is, 64% in ELA in meeting and exceeding and 69% in math, meeting and exceeding. And this middle school math, just to talk about that for a quick minute, is where the most change happened across the state level. So for whatever reason, the depth and the level of expectation in math at the middle school has shifted dramatically. And so that is really where the state is focusing a lot of their energy, just so you're aware, that they're aware. And they're looking at the standards to try to differentiate what's happening with the standard level at middle school math, but also a lot of the work that needs to be done on that, which middle school has its own program as well.
So they're trying to beef it up.
They've definitely beefed up the standards, there's no question about it. So that when the kids are at high school, they can take a range of math and, you know, and be proficient with it. So they've pushed it into the middle school pretty heavily, I would say. All right, great. Middle school, 67% ELA, exceeding or meeting expectations, 61% in math and 48% in science. So we have a new science program that is happening right now at the middle school that our teachers are really happy with. So they're implementing it for year one. I've been really interested to see these scores next year once we've got that, you know, fully operational across the middle school. And so I know that they're doing a lot of work building that into their coursework and I'm happy about that. And then in grade 10, we have 98% of our students scoring, I know. An advanced difference. Do you see how life changes when you get to high school? And it's just, a lot of it has to do with life at middle school. I really, you know, and content and the depth of content and there's a lot of it.
It's the legacy text.
It's the old text.
Yeah. Oh, correct. Or is it the legacy scoring with the new standards?
It's the legacy scoring with new standards. And they're only going to change the scoring, I believe, they will be changing it until 2024. That's what I heard last, because it's a graduation requirement. So because it's a graduation requirement, they have to work, kind of do that level of work to make sure that they're being consistent so that we're not graduating this.
It's sudden, having a 10th grader with 25% of kids.
Right, right. So they're taking their time with changing those schools and stuff. 97% in math, advanced proficiency. So, and that's why I wanted you to see a range of data today so that you can get a sense of the SATs and the APs and the high school and then all the things that are, that are happening to get to this point. 93% of our kids in science scored in proficiency.
And when they get to 10th grade, they find a gap. Is the 10th, let's be real, is the 10th grade test as rigorous as it could be, as it should be?
Not compared to the AP, you know.
It's a lower hurdle to get proficient and advanced than it is in the middle school.
But that hasn't been changed yet, right? The 10th grade test hasn't been kicked up a notch, right?
Right. Well, the standards have changed, so they are changing. But they're reporting that in the past, so it'll be interesting to see what they change.
When is that happening?
By 2023. We just don't know, like, between now and then.
So the old jaded meaning feels that they're never really allowed to deviate from the cuts course for exactly the reason you said, is they can't put out a test score suddenly. 30% of the students are going to have a competency in traditional, you know, graduate. So it's an easier, it's a harder test because of developmental level, but it's an easier bar to clear. The other, I mean, kind of look at it, we always try to make the argument, right, that if a student is in training until they come to their end part. So is it really fair? It gives you a snapshot of progress and it gives you a direction where to go for the grade level or student based on their needs. But they're developing. You expect growth to fit and start for any individual student along the way. And the real tale is where do we want them to land in the long-term span of their life, if it's all before. So I jumped to information.
No, because there is a lot to talk about when it comes to this and how they do it and what is going on. So this is all the MCAS data, okay? And all of this is built into the accountability system, which is brand new. Now they're looking at and using a lot of different metrics within the accountability system, which was the other PowerPoint I sent you, okay? If that makes sense. All of this, I would like to say is kind of like the ground swell for a lot of what you're saying. Accountability brings in other data as well. Yes, do you want to talk about anything before we get to accountability?
I just have a quick question. Before we talk about accountability?
Yep.
We know what the data is that informs MCAS?
Yes.
That goes to the tests. What's the data that informs all of this information?
I'll show you that.
Okay.
And if he's taking the place of a level X level on the school? This is like the new...
This is, yes. This is now, remember when you were level one high school? This is the new system.
Right.
Yep. But there are a lot of changes within this system that I feel like are really difficult in the sense of how they organize the data. So it's almost like that three to eight grade span that we're just looking at. We just did a full three to eight thing, none new in high school. It's the same thing in accountability. So all the schools are in the same bucket. Essex, Memorial, and the middle school are all in the same bucket now. They used to be reported out as middle school or the elementary, K to five, or whatever the bucket was that they were in, but now they're all in the same bucket.
Why?
Get one district.
So no, we get two reports, one at a high school. We got, each school gets its own report, but all the data that I just showed you is thrown into the same bucket.
So it's non-high school and then high school.
Correct.
So why?
So non-high school could be K to eight, K to five, K to two. And now, okay, three to five, four to five, you know, six to eight, five to eight. Every single configuration of school that could ever be is in that bucket.
But why? Why the need?
I don't know. Wish I knew the answer for that question. And I don't know. I don't know. So that's the new system. Overall, last year's scores, even though they were held harmless, counted as the baseline for the CPI scale or the growth scale that that's being expected. And now this is the new exam within that scale. So there's a lot of moving parts to this. But overall, what the state found is that 74% of schools in the three to eight bucket or the high school bucket, whatever it is maybe, were not requiring assistance or intervention. So that is kind of like your level one or two school system, okay? Level three is the ones that we know about from old school ways of reporting. We're following it, there were 14% of schools that were kind of designated, I think, in that requiring assistance or intervention. And that's at the state level. They push somebody into your building or school district and they help you with the data or try to figure out where your strengths and weaknesses are. And then 12% is insufficient data. I don't really know what that means, I haven't even asked. But overall, what they're finding in their new accountability system is that 90% of schools are not requiring any kind of state intervention. So that's a difference from what I think, you know, we have seen in the past because we have schools across the state that we're going to mention for different needs and purposes. So this is our accountability scale now. And this is the way it's being reported out. And so what I showed you were the front pages of Essex and Memorial. I believe are the first two that I put together here just for you to look at. And that, and this shows you just an incredible range of data. So this shows you, basically, I have to look it up, yes, I can read it. Basically, it's showing you, is where the school falls on a continuum across a bunch of other schools in the same bucket, so the three to eight schools. And it also shows you how you are... And it also shows you how you are meeting the targets, and that means the growth scores, the achievement scores that have been designed for each school. It shows you the accountability percentile on a range of one to a hundred, just like it used to. And then it shows you these three or four bands on the left-hand side going down in overall results. The achievement scores, the growth scores, high school completion, which is not applicable, obviously, to elementary school. And the biggest indicator, I would have to say, is now an absenteeism indicator. So if you have children in your building that are considered to be chronically absent, that's now factored into your overall school's accountability score. It's a major change. It used to be an old school AYP twenty years ago, I remember that. But we haven't seen it really show up since then in this actual overall school.
And where is that on here?
It's way at the bottom in the gray.
Can you explain how, so chronic absenteeism? Do you want to, what do you want?
What is that?
Do you want four, do you want, is a higher number better, or a lower number is better?
You want a higher number, right? You want the highest number you could get. You want three out of four, you want four out of four. So you're really shooting for four out of four. Yeah. So chronic absenteeism, I don't know if you've had this conversation, or you pulled it out of the PowerPoint. Chronic absenteeism is eighteen or more, if it's a senior year. So any student that's absent eighteen days or more is considered chronic absentee.
So, so if I have multiple, that's good, how, like, how does this type of school?
If you had mono and you were out of school for twelve days, that would be great.
So.
So it's hard.
So I'm looking at Essex has a three chronic absenteeism, and that tells me that there are more than.
There are some students in the school that have chronic absenteeism.
And does Manchester have that?
Yep, every town has it.
No, I know, I'm not saying that they don't, I'm just saying that ours is lower than theirs is. And my question is that I know that when we were talking.
It's the same.
No, it is, Francisco has three.
They have three, we have, Essex has three, four, 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 and Manchester has four, four, three, four.
It's a different population. You've got chronic absenteeism among the total, among population. All students versus low performance students. But I know that when you talked to Jennifer.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Well, I feel like hopefully I can answer your questions, but I can't. No, I don't, I will. In the actual overall band of scores, you'll see that, and what I look at is where do our schools bear across the whole range of all schools in this bucket, okay? So when you look at the accountability percentile, Essex, regardless of the chronic absenteeism or if it's a, is that eight-fourth percentile? So I feel like that, that's a hefty and strong number, right, coming out of the gate. And then Memorial's at ninety-six. So they are very similar in the range of where they fall in the overall comparison to other schools in each school's data.
Sometimes I miss. No. AYP, remember AYP?
I do, yes, very well.
Is it, is it going to be AYP with a different name?
Yes.
That's great.
Right? I had, I had like an AYP flashback when I first looked at this, I did. So, yeah.
But it's saying that sixteen, so for Essex, only sixty percent of the schools in the three to eight band scored better than us in that particular school. So we're in the top twenty percent?
Yes. So regardless of how the data is broken up, what the data does is basically helps us determine where do we focus our energy? Where do we need to address the issues? Where do we need to go in and train our teachers? Where do we need to get better materials? I mean, that's really what we use the data for. So it's helpful to have that so we can make those decisions and, you know, and get what we need out of, out of the data, okay? So the middle school, now, middle school's in the same bucket. So what we're looking at, the middle school, is a different scenario altogether. It's not necessarily, there is some chronic absenteeism going on in some cases. So we need to figure out who these students are, how can we support them? What are we going to do in some cases? You know, is it, is it a medical issue? What is the case here that we need to address and how to support our students? But also, you know, what are we going to beef up in terms of curriculum? How do we address that? How do we make sure kids are writing across the content area? How do we make sure that our students are in the most well-developed units of study when it comes to science or math or ELA? So we definitely have that, and have been, and we're all aware of those two different things. And then at the high school, you will see, I'm looking at, I'm putting my people. At the high school, we're looking at a really strong showing of the ninetieth percentile in terms of accountability. Now, you saw our scores were at ninety-eight, ninety-seven, ninety-six, but we're at the ninetieth percentile. So do you see how all the high schools are being compared to each other? Regardless of the scores, how some of this can factor in? And I would have to say our chronic absenteeism might be that little thing, to put us at ninety as opposed to ninety or ninety-seven. So it's going to be different depending on the year and the cohort of students that's different. So it's, it's, the numbers game. So it's just trying to figure out what happened in that year, within that content, in those students, those particular students. So I feel like I'm almost at the end, so then I can actually answer some questions. So what are we learning from the data? How do we handle baseline data? And what, and how do we look at our longitudinal data? That's what I'm trying to figure out. What are our trends? How do we ensure that we have the where we need it to be? How are we aligning curriculum and updating curriculum? And making sure we're coherent, but also we're aligned to the state standards in that way?
I missed a slide.
Oh, did I? Sorry, okay. Are we addressing the whole child? And then we have an analytical thing I'm going to show you in a couple of minutes. So going back to this last slide, twenty accountability. Seventeen percent of schools across the state are considered to be meeting their targets, like A number one, fully there, completely done. Seventeen percent of all schools.
So you could be in the top ten percent, but only partially meeting targets.
Yes, you could, you absolutely could. This is the AYP flashback, yes, that I'm having. Seventy-five, and that's why the data is really so important, like, at, intrinsically, at each little component, because it could be something over here that's impacting your scores over here. So that's, that's what we do. Seventy-five percent of schools were categorized as partially meeting targets across the state. So this is all statewide data. Seven percent were categorized as in need of focus or targeted support, and only one percent were in need of comprehensive support. And I know that you're probably aware of some districts that were in that category. A lot of issues that I'm trying really hard to pull out of that. DES recommendations, don't compare these results to last year's. So the first thing that they say to us, everything that we go to is this is not comparable to last year's data in any way, shape, or form, almost in all new tests, all new protocols. All new criteria with that whole chronic absenteeism piece in high school graduation rates and things like that. Don't equate the historical levels. I know people just do that automatically. But exceeding expectations is the same as advanced. We all do it. So what they're saying is try not to do that, because there are different expectations now in those exceeding expectations. And they didn't do any type of crosswalk like they typically do to bring you from like old CPI to new, you know, new CPI, if that's the word they're willing to use. They haven't done that level of work, so they shouldn't, we shouldn't expect to do that. We shouldn't expect to be responsible for that level of work again. So that's what they're trying to say. So there's a lot here, obviously, so there's the accountability system, which was everything in combined, including the MCAS data and a lot of other criteria pieces. Then there's the MCAS data itself that's different and changing. And then SHT and APs. So they just give you four different kinds of data to think about. And there is a new system that I'm trying to build that will allow us to look at some of those things. Like you said, how do we get from like everyday class stuff to the MCAS exam day, which is a whole year's worth of assessment, one test? Right, right. So I'm going to show you a little about what we're doing, but I will answer your questions while I'm looking at these.
We'll go around.
Oh, you said one each.
No?
She started.
You're starting?
She said you started.
Ready to go?
Yes.
So from the beginning, like with our APs?
Sure.
So, those are questions about APs.
All right.
All right.
So how many, just thinking about the social emotional health of our children.
Yes.
How many AP classes, as a, as a district, I was only, I believe, person that we have, like, you can take maximum two or three or whatever. Do we have a policy about how many AP classes that they can take?
We don't, but.
And did we not, am I making that up? That we were talking about that kids should not?
Parents have to sign a waiver for kids to take more than, I can't remember what the number is, two or three?
More than four.
Or the.
What's the recommended number?
The college board recommends that you take two, two APs.
And how many of our kids take more than two APs?
I don't have the answer to that, but I know that it's pretty significant.
Yeah.
That's something that worries me, which probably not all people in school.
Just to say, there were a hundred and forty-five students taking APs and three hundred and twenty-five.
Just to break it down by junior. So that was my one question.
Remember having that conversation about.
We had that conversation.
Yeah, about talking to the, it's an individual decision, talking to the guidance counselor and the parent.
But I had, just, and this is not for answering that, but to put out there for food, but I thought is, I had heard some things this year that kids had to take more APs than they wanted to because of scheduling conflicts. So for them to get into what they wanted to, they had to bump up to an AP because they couldn't get what they wanted. So I don't know if this.
We've got a schedule.
So that's something that.
Sometimes it's a schedule issue, because if you're teaching AP, this is not a good example to use, but let's just say you're teaching calculus, AP, and only one section of it is to a teacher, and that definitely dictates the schedules.
Yep.
I know in years past, and I don't know that this is the case anymore, there was a question about alignment with new AP standards and what we were teaching in school. And when I look at the chem, the chem results, and I see eleven kids got twos.
Yep.
That, that, I wonder, you know, what, what, what do we ask ourselves? I don't, I don't want to ask simply about, but when you see scores like that, what do we do as a district to say, okay, that's not the result we want? So what do we need to do with the coursework to kind of better that outcome?
Probably things, well, I mean, to look at the coursework and to determine how, how can we, we've got the coursework, and it's happening in the coursework, how can we make sure our students are handling or are able to handle the difficulty in chemistry pretty? Sometimes it's a math issue. Sometimes it's the student's taking the class wants to try it, but, you know, but may not be able to handle that level of math. Who knows? So it could, I'm sure it's individual, for each particular student that's in that, in that bucket. But I'm sure, I'm sure that they are looking at that to try to determine is it a content issue? Is it a, is it an execution issue? Or is it an issue where the student just wants to take chem, AP chem and try it?
Yeah.
We don't really know, but that's a definite possibility.
But I know that, I'll just say this, because having a couple of kids with science focus in college, they both struggled with chem when they got to college. And I wonder.
Do they take AP?
But I know AP, but I know that college chem is very, very hard. And it's, so I'm just wondering, you know, we have great teachers here in that area. So it's just, I'm just wondering, you know, this happened when our kids were in, we had the same kind of questions about AP exams changing, and we were not necessarily on the same, on the ball on that. So it was, do you own that, or does the head of the department from that kind of responsibility checking the AP?
Yeah, we have, our, our, our science department is already in touch with when this is happening.
Yeah, so the department heads own that?
Yes.
And everybody's been trained.
Everybody's trained, and if there is a new training, we send the teacher to the new training so it can show that we're doing it right.
I was talking about this with Julie before we started relating tonight.
I'm so sorry.
There's also for AP intent of how a lot of seniors, there are some APs that senior might prefer not to take the AP exam. They might want to take the class and learn the content and not care about the exam because it doesn't get credit for them in college, and they're done with high school, and it's seven weeks later, and they have to sit for this exam that doesn't have any repercussions for them, it's not going on their college application, and they're not getting credit for the one-on-one class in college. So they get two.
Yeah.
It's also hard material.
Yeah, it is hard.
But if, you know, it's a totally different ballgame, and if they think, oh, I don't have to take Spanish in this school, if I get a four or five in this exam, like, that might not be true for chemistry, and they're kind of checked out.
Yeah. It really is an individual situation. And are there any other questions?
I just have one, sort of related to AP in general. I've had some comments over the years, just to make sure that we've got the right people teaching AP courses. So I've had, over the years, a couple of people comment to me. I don't have kids in AP yet, so just trying to.
I had a question about the little kids.
An AP?
No. I want to know who they are.
So SATs.
All right, SATs, any questions? I mean, SATs, yeah.
Okay, so just sort of, same. So SATs, is it true that we're here, like, that colleges are really not, in the foreseeable future, SATs might not be something that they're, or, no?
I would say that's fantasy.
That is fantasy.
I think being stuck in the [inaudible 0:11:58] there are more test optional schools than there used to be. But I wouldn't say that they're going away.
Yeah.
Can I follow the big line? It's going to be about fit?
So if your student isn't a test taker, and it's not what they want? Then I would work with your counselor toward aligning towards schools that would be a priority? But I don't think you, we can count on Harvard's, okay? So if you're going to want to go to Harvard, Yale group, you're probably going to have to.
If you spend some time in that, you'll really see like that is just very heavily filtered. So when you're, I've been in there a lot, really. So when you're looking at, I have a senior, so when you're looking at particular schools, you know, one of the schools that we were looking at had just blatantly said you need to be here to really be considered in terms of an application. So some schools really heavily rely on that as, as a leading tool or mechanism. And that, I don't know why that's going to change, but I would make that a context.
That's a framework question.
So I have a question about, you know, we're looking at AP, we're looking at SAT scores and the MCAS scores. And we keep getting sucked into this high achieving student conversation. I do too. So is the new MCAS assessing all murderers, or is it assessing high performing? Are we missing a piece in our kind of view of the holistic?
Child.
Child, not just child, but our, our population. I mean, I just, I, I, I think that, you know, it's great to see that we're having high performing students, I think that's great. We have different ways of measuring too, so.
One of the things, one of the things that I think about that's so important about what we're doing with Yale and our new working and all of that is one of the articles that I read just at the end of last year was that the number one class that freshmen are taking at Yale is classified happiness.
It's a big thing on the newspaper.
It's huge. So, and I feel like I have to think about that. So what that says to me is, these kids are working really hard to get where they want to go, and they are just knocking it out of the park and all of the place. But they're not really equipped to deal with the whole aftermath of that, which is like, all right, how do I just be myself? How do I just do the stuff in terms of relying on just me? And how do I, you know, stop trying to do all those major things? Or how do we learn how to do all those things and be happy? Or feel fulfilled, satisfied with these things? So I feel like, like, yeah, when I feel like, you can do two things at the same time. It's just learning how to do those two things at the same time. How to self-manage, how to, you know, learn all of those skills and strategies to worry about yourself at the same time as worrying about where you're going to go and what you're going to do.
It just, it implies the career readiness is, is it, is a solely academic pursuit? And it isn't. So I, I just, I, I think we have this, we're saying this measures college and career readiness, but it doesn't, it doesn't measure.
You're saying assessments measure, I know. So, the assessments are measuring your academic capacity. They're not really measuring you personally and, and how you're able to work in the world, to be in the world and take all this knowledge and apply.
Navigate the world. Yeah, yeah, alone, without your mom and dad.
Right.
Pulling the levers for you.
Right, and I do feel like we are definitely thinking about that and trying to figure out how to build some of these things in so that when it's time for you to go and do and be and apply all of this stuff that you've learned, you can do it and be successful and be happy and feel satisfied and challenged.
It bothers me that kids have to take a class and what happens.
It's not a class though, it's really not a class, it's really.
A connect exercise.
I think we have kind of gone in a way where we have to think about that though. So what is our society saying, you know, like where are we in the world? It's a good question. Um, but I do feel like it's our job to help kids adapt, you know, and try to figure out how to just go, how can we do that?
But.
And I'm going to say.
But there's the parent piece too. I mean, we cannot expect the schools to do all this stuff. Like, I mean, I'm glad to see that parents, there's a role for parents in this, but seriously, like, parents need to understand their role and this is not solely on us, the schools.
I'll give my, I'll go to my annual statement, which is MCAS is fundamental knowledge that kids, basic knowledge that kids should be able to master that to then move on to different pathways. Whether it's career readiness, whether it's college and you're going the route of APs and SATs, whether it's a two-year college, whether it's a gap year. So it's really just making sure that all the schools in Massachusetts are getting a basic level of knowledge for all kids. And that's why, that's why they're doing it, to make sure that the, the lowest funded school and the highest funded school still get to a basic level of education. So we should always be taking away where are our gaps? So the biggest thing we're seeing is we need alignment in the middle school.
Yep.
Because even though the scores aren't what we want them to be, we are still outperforming state numbers. And our kids who struggle are outperforming the state averages. So, we are still operating at a very high level of achievement. So we should be ensuring that we're structured to give the kids the best chance on these assessments, looking at them, then moving on to go to those next steps that you outlined. My, I think where we all get all worked up and that's the collective weed other towns is the adults started using these as competitive, competitive measures of one town versus another. And who's better and who ran higher and what that means for us as adults. And not really what it's saying about how are we restructuring our academics, are we funding our academics, provide the support for them for kid paths that we need to make sure the kids have their basic needs. So, it's on us not to, to look at these in the right way and leave them and what we need to do to improve the quality of what we're offering and not hit one kid or family advancement. But that goes to your point, it's parents and adults in opinion, bring that attitude to the table.
Well, this is what we're responsible for. We're a school.
Right.
Or three schools, four schools. And we are responsible for teaching these kids how to think right and think critically.
Mm-hmm.
And there needs to be some accountability, but to your point, parents, adults take it a little too far. I'm sorry.
Well, and it falls down on the kids because the kids think that. And it's the pressure at the school level, you know, that, am I dumb or whatever? And it's about how are we teaching them and that's what we miss. And I think the parents, but I think also the pressure at the schools, we miss that. We do, in my opinion. It's about the kid versus, yes, that's what we're doing.
Um, the thing that's the most confusing to me about all the big data picture that you talked about is why, how is it possible that the middle school has an accountability percentile of sixty-five and high school has an accountability percentile of ninety if it's like the same kids?
Yeah.
Because the, there's the bucket again. So like three to eights in high school are kept in two different worlds in terms of accountability. So the accountability that you're looking at for the middle school is the middle school against twelve hundred other schools. So every other middle school, every other elementary school. So, and the test is different in middle school than it is in elementary. So this is where I have a problem. So we're, if you even looked at what I printed out in terms of writing, between what the middle school kids are responsible for and turning out versus what the elementary kids are responsible for and turning out in terms of just depth of content, you would never put them in the same bucket. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, non-high school and high school.
Yeah.
That makes sense. So, our six, seven, and eight little cohort there is being compared against twelve hundred other schools as opposed to, let's just for sake of argument, like four hundred.
Correct, but they're all middle schools.
No, they're all.
Every create school configuration.
Yeah, dream up. But then wouldn't that work the same or conversely for our elementary schools? They're being compared against schools that have a middle school component possibly.
Yes. They are. But the middle schools are, are, the depth of content at middle school is so much more extreme than it is in grade grade. That's why I'm saying that's the, that's the challenge in terms of content that we're looking at. That's in the same bucket.
It's just extremely confusing because they're clearly ready for high school if they get there and have a ninety percent.
Right.
Accountability percentile. So why does it look like they're getting a C minus?
Scores are so much more, like between exceeding and, I can't remember the other word. Partially exceeding. Between those two, the cut score might be ten. But between advanced and proficient at the high school, the cut score might be twenty or twenty-five.
It's easier to score higher at the high school than at the lower level.
So we're back to the same thing that we're talking about.
So that guy name still exists. And I think what Julie's trying to say, if you look at the middle, the middle schools were only ever ranked against middle schools. Does the wrong word, assessed against middle schools before, but next. So that took out seven, eight combinations that were in a K eight environment or seven, eight combinations that were in a junior high environment. So that pool's gotten bigger. So it's just a larger cohort overall, but you're still looking at like grade spans for growth. But when they give, it's confusing.
So does it make this data from middle school kind of worthless?
It's not worthless. It's, what I'm seeing is we've got, you've got to get on, we've got to get the seventh and eighth grade realigned to the new standards and start to move this train forward.
But it's never going to show up as successful.
It might not show up in accountability, but it will show up on the MCAS.
Okay, that's where I'm going. So the accountability score is always going to be much lower than reality.
I'll be interested next year to see where we are. That's when I think I'll have a better.
Because you're being compared against a larger pool. It's an apple and an orange.
Yeah.
Being compared against Brazilian oranges.
Correct.
And actually, the middle school has the greatest chance for improvement and growth because it has a lower baseline.
Right.
So some of it is just in numbers.
And to next year.
To next year.
High school completion has also been back there, high school career has a lot of that.
Right. So when I was looking at one of, I re-arched MCAS now, one of the questions, two things that I had was I don't understand still and I want to push and get the DES to explain it to me, how Essex ended up with zero points for science but had a decent percentage of, um, meeting and seeing.
I think that the middle school has a zero for English language architecture.
Yeah, that was interesting.
Yeah.
So some of these things don't make sense to me.
So when you score, I asked, I emailed them and they got back, Hannah. Um, if you are earning zero points, it's because your twenty eighteen results were more than two point five CPI points below the twenty seventeen baseline data.
Which you're not supposed to.
Which you're not supposed to use to compare in your scores what the state is. So, I'm just telling you. Uh, so that was my question, was what happens when you have a zero? Does it mean you have zero growth whatsoever? Well, you had zero growth compared to the CPI score that they gave you.
Last year.
Last year.
Which you're not supposed to.
On your baseline, which was held harmless data, which I argue counts. So I feel like there is an interesting conversation here, which is why I really feel like next year I, I will feel a little bit more at ease in terms of like how the data is being reported.
And this stuff is really even more confusing now.
The D C go, yeah, questions.
So we did, we did a great session for the AC team, but I think we killed you because every time you put something out there, we had six questions that we all had to write down.
We're all learning it. I mean, I've sat through five Department of Defense presentations and still need to know any more questions. So I feel like it's, it's okay to have questions in this world because it's all.
You know, so.
Go ahead.
So it was harder for kids to make exceeding.
Yes.
Expectations.
Yes.
So we had more kids in meeting expectations than we, we lost a bunch of kids who were exceeding, I'm assuming, and are now just in meeting. I shouldn't say just because of meetings.
Right.
So that has nothing to do with our curriculum. It's just that.
It does.
It's, it's.
Well, the, and, so our new standards came out in Massachusetts twenty seventeen. So it's, this is a twenty eighteen exam that incorporated all the twenty seventeen standards. But if it wasn't updated fast enough within, or before our kids took the test and monitored whether they took it like year number one, then they, the curriculum wasn't fully vetted then by the time the kids took the exam, which is where it was. So now, this year, it's really the year to realign, to focus and to make sure that kids are getting the practice that they need on all these different expectations.
I asked a question on the.
And the great, if you look at the grade level standards, if you go on, on my, if you have on our website, um, under curriculum instruction, you'll be able to see what the grade level expectations are, you know, for each grade level. The Department of publishes those as well. So it's, it's a real thing. You definitely remember that.
I mean by that, they should, where they should be in these little green, orange, or.
Yeah.
Where they should, a grade level should be in, what they should be doing to the team, right?
Yep.
And you should know, we lobbied pretty hard with the state, NASS did, to do, when we first pulled out the MCAS, we didn't put out scores originally because of the feeling that we all have right now, which is you can't make sense of it the first time around. And you gave time for teachers to adjust, kids to adjust to taking this new assessment. So we asked for a year, instead of just using the old harmless, which apparently has no impact. Just don't release the scores for the course a year or two, let everybody readjust the necessary. They did not. So we didn't get a lot of traction. Do I want to have any other questions? I want, I think this might help answer a couple of questions. Yes.
I had, I had one really specific question and a really general question. So my really specific question is that now that all the essays are on the computer.
Yeah.
Are they still being scored by people or are they being scored by a computer program?
People.
Those are the ones. And then, um, my other question's really broad. So, given that we have this more challenging curriculum that keeps ramping up and up and up, um, how is this impacting our teachers and our students? And are we being careful to preserve our, especially our younger students and having developmentally appropriate practices while they're also looking at the new curriculum?
Yes, the great question. I, I love that question because I didn't worry about that, honestly, just it's scary. Um, you want your children to be able to read and write, um, and, and learn how to do those things. But also, certainly have to type, know how to type and throw it on the paper or in the computer when it's necessary. So, um, one of the things our teachers asked for this year was to pilot a handwriting program. So we are piloting a handwriting program this year, um, that allows for the practice of learning how to write, which we know does a lot neurologically competence and supports a lot of the learning, phonics and reading and all those things. So, we're doing that work so that we can stay developmentally appropriate, but also we're getting practice in the typing so that we have more practice about the upper grade levels and more of the handwriting and learning how to do that.
And then also just in general though, are they still, like, do they still have time to play in kindergarten? And do they still have time to, you know, you know, work with Play-Doh and do all those other things?
Yes, we do. But I do like to stay in the concern because if you read those kindergarten standards, they're pretty intense.
Yeah.
They really are. So, it, it is kind of a fine line in making sure that.
I think our teachers are really good at pushing back. Helping us to strike the balance. Um, I think we're caught up in what he brings up, which is we push. We're all, I think, as a district, wanting to check and imbalance, but then the numbers roll out and somebody asks a pointed question. And we don't respond with the answer that we have the responsibility to keep things developmentally appropriate and balanced. And on the whole, we are way above the average and continually getting kids to a very high endpoint for graduation. We feel that knee jerk reaction to be defensive about, you know, well, it's not that bad. And so, if we're going to go with the balanced approach, we can't expect to always be tipping out at ninety eight. Because then you go into a mode of trying to, and we can get there because I can, in our conversation the other day. So what pieces of the system of the metric do we have to target to make sure we drive, um, you know, achievement up in the sixty percent column so that it can outweigh? So we can get caught up in that, that's not the work that's hitting place. I think it's a debate around whether or not we're leaning too much into intervention and not putting enough resource and responsibility into tier one, which is the general classroom, whether or not, um, we are keeping pace. You know, some of the things we'll talk about in negotiations or part float, are we keeping pace with curriculum review and recycle so that we're not playing catch-up at certain points of time and we're trying to stay ahead of the curve? But the state owns its piece of this, which is, this is not a great rollout.
Well, you know, normally you would not rule out three major changes dealing at the S I's at the same time and then change the test. So I feel like there's a lot on that too, uh, and just trying to keep up with all of that. I feel like, you know, it's not an easy task. And, and that wasn't developmentally appropriate, I really have to think about it. I would say that didn't give teachers enough time to do all the heavy lifting, especially at the middle school level. Our three major content areas that we teach all those too. So it's a lot for everyone. I feel like over time, the way it sinks in, it will feel a little bit.
And I think something for this group to just kind of keep thinking about in their minds, we may have an opportunity to say we have to go our own way with the lower grade levels. We can opt out.
Yes.
No.
Well, no.
We can't. But it's being discussed as a potential option going forward. So if it's an option that's given to us, that's what Julie's showing you up there, do we have enough local data? Which is where I think people spend a good, most of their time.
We spent a lot of our time in school, not looking necessarily at the MCAS data, but looking at the data that we collect, um, through interventions and things like that. So, the first sheet that I just showed you or that I had up there was all of our MCAS data. But this is all like local data. Um, I'm not going to get into it tonight, but it's really how we assess kids over time at each particular grade level with comprehension, fluency, or, um, phonics knowledge and things to that effect. So, it's being able to pull this and then look at our everyday life and curriculum so that when the kids get to third grade after K one, two, three, they can perform on, at this level, which is what the state has.
Is this all according to the state regularly or this is all for?
No, this is just our, this is just for us.
We're building our own data.
So I'm taking, I'm taking the state data, building our own database and then taking our school data and building that too so we can work it together.
So I have two questions. Do we have goals, like, it, it seems to me that, you know, if you just set goals, we wouldn't, I, I guess I want to, I don't want to be surprised or disappointed, I would just want to say, and yep, we're, we're, we're writing where we wanted to be against goal, you know, against where we want, you know, our goals were. Does that make sense? I.
Yes, like a CPI goal or something like that.
Just, yeah, I mean, I just, I would love to walk into a year saying, we want our scores to be this so that we don't have to focus on this other, like this stuff. We can focus on this. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I don't think. I'm not going to answer. I'll, taking my answer, it's not realistic. We're dealing with people. So, some of this is structured, right? So we can look at this and say, we are teaching the subjects and there are areas that we need to dive into and attend to. But the total achievement number is dependent on.
People in the class.
The people.
Yeah.
And then bigger people and bigger people.
Right, right, right.
So I don't know that we can ever set a goal and hit it because as much as they're looking at spans, we're still looking year to year at those achievement numbers being different cohorts and different groups of kids compared against different groups of kids.
Right.
So that's why I think.
Well, what about a growth chart? You know, you go, take your kid to the doctor every year and they said, they say, as long as you're doing this, you're, you're staying on this curve. You're fine, don't worry about the detail, just worry about the curve. So is that, is that, I mean, I'm just trying to think about what do we need to set as a district to say, this is, we're healthy and we're doing what we should be doing and we're not going to let, get mired in the deep, in the, in the.
So she showed it to you because she started with the end in mind.
Yeah.
In the end is our graduate. So if we're going to go through an exercise, um, as part of me ask, that's going to be, what do we want the graduate to look like?
Yeah.
So that might help with broad strokes on that, but if you design with the end in mind, you want kids that are college ready or career ready, meaning they're ready to exit here with a set of skills that they can take out of their own, pursue their interests.
Yeah.
And I think all of the data is pointing to the fact that we achieve that on a regular basis. So a kid may start in partially meeting at the third grade, but all of our kids end up in meeting or exceeding by the end.
Yeah.
And I don't think, I cannot think of one time in the past. And I don't think, I cannot think of one time in the past eight or nine years that a student hasn't received a diploma because they had one, two, or three companies. Regardless of what their, their result is. So, I think we are hitting it out of the park. I've been nervous to set a metric. Because like, one of my questions was going to be, just looking at, um, some of the high school data for completion of school. If our, I mean, we're looking at one or two kids who may or may not complete because they've taken an alternate pathway. So how do you close a gap on one or two kids? Because I don't know that you're going to have multiple years of perfection with kids graduating. And they may be the brightest, most capable students who are just choosing options.
Yeah.
So, that, that's my caution, is putting a metric on it.
Yeah.
So I'm sorry, I jumped. I'm also worried about this AYP factor. Um, so when I look at ninety percent, um, ninety-six percent at memorial schools, ninety percent at the high school, what is the expectation from the state in terms of, are they expecting ninety-one percent next year? Or, you know what I mean, like that AYP?
Yeah, I know exactly what you mean.
It's the other half of the sheet that all the.
It's the left-hand side of the paper that you want us to get. Because the right-hand side puts you in like the band of one to a hundred. It's the left-hand side that's really your data, school-based data, that gets you onto the other side when we compare you against everybody in that pocket that you. So I understand, I am watching that whole AYP concern that you have, because I, I do have it too. But I also know, based on that answer that I got today from them, um, that they're still using, I don't care what they say, they're still using the CPI scale. So when, when we look at the CPI scale, we'll know how that's going to look over time.
So AYP and CPI are acting.
AYP was built out of CPI. So CPI created the AYP.
It's just that tiny percentage.
Yep. It's that.
You always got to keep getting better.
Right.
So if you're coming in at ninety-two.
That's, that's the point I also want to make. Our high school at ninety-nine percent. So, um, I'm just warning people that, yep, we might be at ninety-eight next year. Do you know what I'm saying? So this like, it's, it's all in that whole intact, intact CPI. So, it's just knowing that it, it runs both ways.
A big part of the calculation is the right-hand side of the charts of accountability, which are our lower performing students. And if they, and if you go back to no child left behind, the whole goal is to make sure that the kids who need it the most, whether economically disadvantaged or, um, struggle academically, and it, there's a correlation between the two. Their resources and challenges are being presented to them. So a big part of the calculation as to whether or not we're meeting our goals is whether or not we're closing gaps with our low performance students. But, but, but you're looking at grade, you're looking at grade three, year one, grade three, year two. So that, so I'm assuming that they're following that cohort of students.
Yep, that's.
And that's where. That's where the, the twenty percent of the factor accountability is growth of that cohort that we're talking. I mean this stuff.
I know.
It may be impossible.
Super, super stressful, which is why we.
You're digging that.
I love to do that, but at the same time, I love when I can use it to help us do something. And not necessarily just have a bucket.
I think a lot of our conversation, achievement is fairly consistent over time for us. We have little ups and little downs, but it's always in the same ballpark. Student growth is going to be the hardest thing for us to move the needle on when we're starting so close to the top. So, little areas where we're not close to the top, we're going to be where we'll be able to move the needle faster. It's a horrible way to look at it. ELL, we're going to be in and out of. Sometimes we'll have a cohort that counts, you know, within the calculation, sometimes it won't. And I think we're going to talk a lot about chronic absenteeism. Well, it's, what's interesting is that our class size is about a hundred, you know, it's a hu, it's around a hundred mark. And so, you know, one to two kids has a major impact on those scores, so.
Well, and you should look at who those kids are, because they might just be chronic absentee because the family is doing cultural things outside of school.
It might not be.
And I think that's.
That might be.
Or maybe not.
It might be throughout, and that's going to start to work against us. So.
So there's a lot, obviously, we're looking up there in those, in those data buckets. And we are, we're looking at all of those.
Were you surprised with anything?
No, I, I kind of left my, my mind open on this one because I knew we were dealing with apples and oranges. So I just tried to, I'm, I'm just learning honestly, this whole new scaling system and trying to figure out, what does that really look like in practice? So.
Are you alarmed with anything?
Um, I'm not alarmed, but I do want to see, um, the middle school in terms of growth. I want to see, um, how that's working. And I want to see where we need to update curriculum if we need to. So I know that we're updating our science curriculum, which I think will save, um, overall of the scores later on. But also just in terms of teaching science, I want to make sure that we're up to speed on that, and what that looks like at the middle school. And the same with ELL and Math. I want to just make sure that we're gearing up so that our kids can perform, um, and take any classes that they want to do at the time, not be able, that they are not able to handle the content.
There was a science disparity between memorial and SIS.
That was that negative CPI in one school versus the other. So one school, I don't, I can't remember which one, went two points below CPI target, and that's why. So when you're looking at it and it says zero, that's really just a negative two in some cases on CPI. Does that make sense? So, how they report it is not always the actual numerical thing that we're trying to show. So, it's really just a recording scale and how we work with the data underneath that is, is how we work.
And, and I'm happy to go back and take a peek, but my memory serves that we will toggle back and forth in any given year at three, four, and five, with math being higher at Essex or a little lower at memorial, because memorial was struggling with math a few years ago. They did some things, um, around everyday math and pulled it together. The kids also changed who came through. So it's never, it, sometimes it could just, it'd just be the group and sometimes it points to, he had, I think they ended up finding something they were not doing with everyday math, that they then re-implemented and had to fix it. I know John had reported. So I wouldn't overfixate on any one year where one, set, one half of the grade is edging out the other half in those scores. And remember, the district number has all of our out-of-district students in there as well. So that's why it always looks a little funky.
Are out-of-district close-knit students?
Take the MCAS in their, in their, in the school they're attending, because they're, they're technically enrolled with us, but attending elsewhere, so we can.
Is that choice out, or is that?
That's out-of-district.
Okay.
Do they physically come take the MCAS here, or they just take it and their scores are reported?
Right. So our district number is carrying whether or not the instruction and curriculum that are given out of district posts.
That's not.
Well, I mean, it is, it just is.
It is.
Right, which is, that's why sometimes it doesn't all add up when you look at the school's number.
That is probably out of these.
They're a lot.
So I just, I just have to make one observation because I have a problem with not being the, as much of the percentage. But just sort of look at the history and follow this, just not even looking at the number, just looking at the shapes you use. It's obvious that the state ones are curved. You've got two big columns and then only you've got small tails in the other end. And every other, whether it's school or district, on ours is all, like, almost consistently skewed to the left. And I guess, there's some element of norming the data that goes into this. So, I almost don't think, I mean, it sounds like, Jesus, from the shapes, I can't really even get into much of it beyond that. Like, we're looking for, is it forty-five degrees out or is it forty-four degrees out?
Right, right, right. And then that forty-five or forty-four are children. So we're trying to figure out, who are the, you know, like, these are peoples. So, trying to figure out how, how are we doing with our people as opposed to the rest?
Which, which leads me back to, at the end of the day, we have a much richer internal score of our own internal data from our teachers interacting with our students on every day and year to year. And I, and I guess I wonder about, it's, I'd almost, like, in some ways feel more useful in this, and, oh, it's Mr., Mr., you know, Red. He's always taught this course, and these are what his grades, like, in the same test at the end every year. That I think is probably, in some ways, maybe more usable than this, because the measurement system's changed. I don't know, sorry, I'll move it.
Um, so, this is just a thought, I might have to go in your green folder over there. And I appreciate all of this data and everything you do, I'm not a big fan of this stuff. And ju, just as a parent and my just personal philosophy. But, are we, do we have, we keep reviewing this every year, and we always come to the same place at the end. We can't really always talk about the high achieving students. I would love to hear more about, I think we did a little bit last year when, um, I think it was the middle school who came in and some of the kids came in and taught us. I would really like to maybe one-year focus on, we are doing great, we do a great job, the numbers always tell us. But then we always bring up, do we have enough play-based learning in the classroom? Are we reaching that side of the learner? I would almost like to see almost, there's no data, but almost that kind of a presentation, or just to get a feel for, and not necessarily from the teachers, the kids, but from, out of who, but just to know that that really is happening in the classroom, and that we're not losing that. Because clearly, I mean, we go through this every year and it's interesting.
You need to follow Mrs. Roberts' blog, Dr. Roberts' blog, because she posts every week all these pictures of things at Essex Elementary School. And.
I do. Memorial and Tech.
Yep.
Okay, don't do that.
Well, I know what you're saying.
But you know, I just want to get.
I want to see like the programs and how they work and who's doing what.
I just want to get a feel for that, too. Like, when this brings, uh, uh, just to balance this out.
Yeah.
Because to me, that's just as important as this stuff is.
Well, we're going to do two things tonight, but then we suck. I kind of made the call that there was just too much. The left side of this is the YRPS and social emotional report, which is coming in the center.
Yep.
So that's not going to get into play necessarily, but it's going to get into the measure of how kids are feeling in their environment and what some of our successes and weaknesses are. So that might give you, that's probably more what you're interested in, are, are our kids happy, safe?
How are our kids? But, and our teachers, and I, I would assume our teachers don't like to teach to a test, and I just want to.
No, they don't. They don't, they don't teach to a test.
No, 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 I shouldn't say that. But just to get a feel for, you know, that side of the equation.
And that's all next year, we'll be back to the different, each school will come in.
The cycle thing.
Yeah.
All right.
Everyone. Question?
Any other?
Any questions for?
Thank you.
Thanks Julie.
Yeah, like, can I just, so, when we're thinking forward and the possibility of using our own data instead of maybe having to, and you said maybe that would tie in, or Pam said that with the new Ever formula, like, what, is there a, a time when we can think about when this, like, what's happening with all that?
So, I just added that thing that I showed you, that little dashboard.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I would like to get the spring data in there. So, if I had fallen spring in there, then I could really show you, like, here's what's happening, um, with writing, or here's what my daughter's. And here's what's happening, uh, with, um, you know, whatever, fluency or phonics or whatever the case may be. And here's how we're assessing all of those things. And what does that, what does that really look like? Yeah, we can do that, but that would have to be after.
But that's good rest, but then when does the, like, is there a, like, is it going to be years when we can say to the state, we don't want to take the MCAS anymore?
That's going to have to come through a negotiation.
A negotiation.
All right.
So was part of the push on the, I think it's in the beginning, as part of the push on the Ed funding formula, there may be some other asks for the board. And one of the asks may be, um, some freedom from the MCAS. Like, if we can show locally that we can, we can assess and track and report, would they consider giving us the option? Or opting out of the MCAS would be to something.
I think if anybody can show it to Julie.
Or other districts.
I would love to be able to.
Other districts are interested in it. Um, everyone's feeling the same thing, like, the MCAS is driving, everything accountability needs to be thought.
I mean, this had, this is how Everform and the MCAS.
But then we get stuck because we've also bought into national programs and national funding, which keeps the state requiring the state to produce certain data. So, I think hopefully, there's some changes coming. But, right now, to Caroline's point, we have talked as a group about, yeah, sure, we'll go out and I could have made some calls. Part of the problem will be is that they, they won't bless any district right now coming out of the MCAS. So we would just be going alone and reporting no numbers.
We talked about it with John maybe three or four years ago, three years ago.
Right.
And if we report no numbers, we'll be in.
Receiver ship. I mean, that would be their tool.
It's like, that's the irony of it.
And we would be found in need of support. So all we can control now is our reaction to it.
And it's all good rest now. And it's all good rest and sure that we're doing what we need to do at each grade level and that.
And Julie's done a tremendous amount, that, the Google system she's building with the other communities is going to be a big help. Because we have all that RTI information, but no way to, we're such a broader scale other than. All right, I think you successfully helped us get through our waiting period and learn at the same time.
Did she know her mom's a rock star? Was that who that is over there?
Yes. She's listening to us, she's doing her homework.
She has a better earphone.
All right, well, thank you. If you have any other questions, feel free to let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Abby's a real good kid. She's a surfer and an artist.
I know, we keep, everybody in common for her exciting life.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Julie.
I think we have a couple of things.
Julie, anything?
I know. Oh, no, I was just going to say, we've only got a couple of things. Building project update, it's eight ten, so we don't know anything yet. And, um, fiscal twenty budget calendar, right? I mean, that's, it's just, it's just.
I think we all know it by heart right there at this point.
Yep.
Can't believe it's that time of year.
I know.
The, uh, Bobby sent out the packets to all the principals, they're working on their budgets, they know the constraints going in. So, we were, like usual, we're asking them to document what their needs are, knowing that we're kind of going to be, uh, uh, what, what can I?
Can I ask a question with regard to, um, as we, as we get into the budget? Um, can I ask this of you, Bobby? As we get into the budget, can you help us understand the whole healthcare thing as it has swung so, I mean. You don't have to do it now, but as we get into it, just explain to us. We, we know how we got where we were, but how are we now swinging so far to the other side? Where, I think it just helps to have a little bit of explanation.
Yeah, there's, it's a very, I would be happy to do that. It's a big part of the budget.
Yeah.
Uh, it's a big part of the history, it's a big part of why we are, uh, maybe in this year, having a tighter budget than things over prior years. But there are specific questions that would help, because I could, I could go at this a million different ways, just to help me narrow the types of things you want.
I'm just curious how we, you know, we went from like seventeen percent to twenty-six percent, and now we're swinging back to like, what, three percent? Then what is that going to look like going out? I mean, you know, how are we, how's that work?
So rates of, uh, rate increases over time and how they've impacted our budget, is that what we're hearing?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I think that would be helpful to kind of see, like, a historical perspective over the last couple, few years, because that's what's.
No, it's not, no, I'm just saying is healthcare costs are doing this.
No, just as it affects our budget. I mean, we've had this story of, you know, we've had, um, catastrophic claims, and we've had a million and a half out of the budget, or, you know, around a million and a half. And, and just kind of how that plays out over the years, does that make sense?
No, it does. I mean, part of, it's all, it's a different thing, it's like the capital of replacing a field that wears out, but with health insurance, so it just, you reserve some yourself sort of.
So, you know, as, as we get into that discussion.
Another thing I was going to propose is should I send out some invites to do a couple of, um, small subcommittee meetings, finance subcommittee, many, just sort of, uh, work through. And maybe help to prep up for meetings.
What does that mean? That's us.
Well, similar to policy, we can do some deep dives into the questions you think the community wants answered through our budget process. And, you know, have to, it was an incident. Is there benefit to having a few subcommittee meetings instead of adding more large meetings onto the calendar?
Uh, you mean the big, the big group?
Well, right now, we're calendared through January with the anticipation that we're going to need our second and fourth Tuesdays for the building committee meetings.
Yeah.
So, we, we don't have a lot between the tentative budget and the fifteenth of January, where that's going to change. It might be little mid, little dime things. But we might want to have a couple of smaller strategy sessions and bring back ideas to the big group instead of trying to do everything in those two meetings that we have in January.
So it's just. Helps to take from the collaborative meeting too.
Yeah. For those.
Yeah.
I think one of the things we want to talk about on Friday is, uh, buckling down on any extraneous meetings that they're going to expect us to be. Do you know what I mean, like, let's, let's just get it as.
We have two dates offered based on past calendars.
Yep.
That way there is a lot. I, I think, yeah. Managing life's calendar level, if we know now when you're going to be and that we're going to do them, it's fine. It's just when it sneaks up the week before, that's usually where the puffing and puffing starts, because it just gets so tight in January, right?
Right.
And you think, yeah.
Yeah. And, um, I know that. And I know that, you know, most of the finance committees, both of the finance committees have certain reps that go to certain meetings and maybe kind of establishing what the expectations are in this Friday meeting about, you know, we will give you this, we can report it out to your committee so that we aren't playing catch-up or we actually go to those committees. Does that make sense?
Yes. All right, that's it.
Um, school committee comment?
I do have a question. So the shooting at the Cinnabon, it's very historic. And I, I, I wonder if we need to have a conversation about inclusiveness in celebrations in the schools. Because it, I think there's an anti-Semitism thing that's bothering me. And I wonder if we, you know, we have Santa. Santa arrives in both town halls and I, I, we have a Santa breakfast. And I'm wondering, not about taking away something, but how do we make these events that happen in our schools more inclusive?
Those aren't in the schools.
Santa's breakfast.
Well, the Santa breakfast.
Well, it's the coming of both.
No, the great fundraisers from your episode.
I know, but for the vote people.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I know, I know, that's a different, it's a different conversation.
But the Santa breakfast, yes.
The Santa breakfast.
Could it be renamed?
Yeah, and I know that there are other things that are happening at Memorial that are, some folks have some issues with. But I just, I wonder if we are asking the tough question of ourselves about being inclusive of other faiths and other, and no faith.
Is the ADL coming this year too? We just had this conversation.
I'm sorry to, no, I'm not trying to.
We just had this conversation last week at AC. And it's like, it is like peeling them because I think, as we've all been talking about it, our biggest hurdle to overcome is our lack of awareness about how our, we're not outwardly insensitive. We're just lacking knowledge about the fact that somebody may see something differently than us.
Yeah.
So we started having the conversation at AC again, but we're already, I feel like we're already late in the season. That was important. My reaction was to the commentary I got because I raised the Santa breakfast and the Polar Express events that happened at close to the PTO. And everybody's very open to talking to it, but the PTO is already organized and ready to go. So asking them to take it away at this late date may become another issue in and of itself. So anyway, so then people started raising the whatabouts. So yes, I think we need to have a conversation, but I think we need to figure out what the problem is we're trying to solve and whether it's about things or a knowledge base of how we do things. Because health is going on. I mean, you know, because when you start having the conversation, well, that's somewhat outside organization. They are pretty secular at this point, but it is the YMCA. They've chosen it, nobody's said anything to them. It wasn't done in a malicious fashion, but maybe it wasn't the most thoughtful approach. Part of our curriculum in the eighth grade is a Christmas carol. So unless we do it in kind of a coordinated effort.
Yeah.
Then it starts to look like we're cherry picking. And I think we lose the message in that, which is it's not about the thing. It's about being more aware that not everybody sees the world the way that you do and that your action may be a perfectly different to mine.
Yeah.
So I think we need some help with it.
Yes, yes.
But I think we're all arriving to the same point.
I feel like this comes up a lot when we talk about the importance of having multiculturalism and awareness. And you say we're doing X, Y, and Z, and we have multicultural books in the library. And we're doing a lot of things, but we are still doing a lot of things that.
We're, we're in a, we're in a little biased kind of.
Santa Shukna.
There is a lot of.
No.
There is way too much. And then, but this also just, I'm going to bring it up because it just also really intersects with an issue that came up with people's names being mispronounced. And especially your name is a name that doesn't sound like everybody else's name and how that can be really hurtful to students. And so I think maybe as a whole district, we need to raise community awareness, family awareness, school awareness, everybody.
I agree.
And so can you just figure that out?
Yeah, get on that.
Get back to us on the twentieth.
I have a couple of ideas and I don't know if you can do everything right, right away. Because I, I, I guess I'm sensitive to starting our own multicultural work because it feels like it's a very quick.
And I don't want it to be that.
Well, I just, I have to, I just have, I mean, I have to point out some positive. Because I, I worry about, we've gone Santa, we've gone shootings, out there crazy shootings, anti-Semitism. We've touched on names. There's a lot of stuff rolling in there and I worry that kind of what we're trying to address. One of the things I just think is like, one of the biggest impacts from the Washington Interpretenet grade was at the Hall Hospital, was just there. There's a lot of the awareness of that, when people come in. So I worry sometimes it's the, okay, how are we, we're looking at any, we're looking at any way to address it and just doing it appropriately without, you know, what are we trying to solve around raising awareness and saying, geez, we need to be less, I'm just, we're feeling a lot of emotions. It's just, I'm curious how we, how we go about how we address that without taking.
I apologize for drawing it and framing it that way. It's just that it's in my head right now and I don't know how we.
No, it's just for.
Fix the problems, the problems and have it not be about, you know, they're trying to take away Christmas. It's not what we're trying to, I think we just need to talk about.
I'm like, how do you, how do you add in that awareness if it doesn't exist?
Yeah.
Rather than trying to, yeah.
I just don't think it needs to be an important part of any December curriculum. And we talked about this with some parents at elementary school curriculum and, you know, there will be Santa worksheets in December and not everyone does Santa. And it's just, and it's just disrespectful. It's, you know, it's an assumption about everyone does this. And so here are kids and it's not, or it's not.
It's a little lazy.
Lazy.
Everybody does, everybody has a special someone in now, but it's, I mean, yeah.
It does get into, not, not, it's not a defense. It's trying to understand all perspectives in it. Is it people leaning into what they know? So when you think about, you know, we just talked about, you know, kids and play and fun and the holidays. And if that's your frame of reference for the holidays, that's what you lean into as a teacher. So it's not, you're not excluding, you're just not aware enough to include. And if it becomes a mandate, then it gets mangled with the delivery and it becomes the thing we don't want it to be, which is rumblings about a takeaway because somebody complained. And that's not, I think, what we want to communicate.
And I'm not trying to complain, I'm just saying.
And, and you're not somebody, but that's how it can get interpreted.
Yeah.
And then you lose the whole message of what you're trying, or the whole problem you're trying to solve, which is just greater awareness and appropriateness of what we're doing. Because when it moves up to the middle high school, I mean, there are a lot of things that are going on but parents may not be as aware. I mean, there's, there's the singing and the caroling and the, you know, crazy sweater contest. So I think we just have to be, because we're a district that didn't do this twenty years ago when it was the last time these issues were really being taken on. And I, and we've been slowly moving things out, we just have to be deliberate about it. So it's a community decision to be better than what we are right now and not beating groups against each other. That's my biggest concern.
And I think we share that, we all share that same concern.
If you could figure out a plan.
By next week.
Yeah.
Maybe it's a commission. I mean, a new report, the mayor called a commission back in the late nineties and declared the town a no place for hate. And it was a group of advisors, there were educators, there were community members, there was clergy, and it was just about cataloging, I mean, pub idea. How do we become a better, more inclusive community?
Yeah.
And be just more respectful of people's opinions? Because I think without a safety net like that or a mechanism that's broader than anything else.
Than a school.
It becomes the school ripped this out and it's that teacher or that principal and they're just implementing their agenda and it becomes an angry Facebook war, which is not for trying to accomplish. So I may be overthinking it.
It needs to be more of a collaborative wholesale effort from the community, right? Basically, I mean, that's kind of where we're going with this. So it doesn't just become a school-driven effort. But yes, we do need to recognize the fact that people are different now and to respect those differences and acknowledge that.
You want to be inclusive, everyone should be included.
Yes.
Regardless of what your point of view is.